Board of Selectmen for tonight, Tuesday, March 17th. And we'll begin with our first agenda item, which is announcements and updates. Selectmen DeWitt, do you have anything prepared?
I do have quite a few, and I guess I want to start with a comment that we held in Brookline, a tribute to the sort of groundbreaking African-American operatic tenor Roland Hayes on Sunday afternoon, which was a wonderful event. And one of the, for me at least, very special aspects of it, and I did not know ahead of time. And I should also acknowledge that Selectmen Franco and Golstein were also there. But the Hayes family, I'm not even going to try to explain it, is divided. Hayes had a child in Europe early in his life, and then subsequently had a daughter in the United States. And they were, they never knew, the two halves of the family never were in contact until recently. And one of the very special events on Saturday, Sunday afternoon, was Afrika Hayes, who lived in Roland Hayes' house in Brookline after Roland Hayes died, was an accompanist on the piano to a bass singer who was from the European family, whom she apparently only discovered, so to speak, because he came to the New England Conservatory as a student. So there was an opportunity, just in recent history, for the two parts of this family, who had never known each other, not just to get together, but also on Sunday afternoon to make music together. And I found it a very moving event and a great tribute.
Very special moment, I thought, too. It was really, really, really good.
I've got to say, I had been told that it was all sold out, and the waiting lists and everything.
It was very well attended.
It was very, very well attended.
Oh, but I heard that there were some empty seats, and I...
I don't know how, I can't tell you anything other than, it seemed to me, the chapel was pretty full.
Oh, okay.
They had some reserved seats, and maybe fewer of those folks, family members and others, came. I don't know the answer to that. But it was very well attended. Anyway, great event. Moving on, actually, I think, because I was doing it sort of by calendar dates, maybe Selectmen Franco would like to start, because he has an event to, no, on Thursday?
Thursday, this Thursday. So it's an event entitled "The State of Hunger in Massachusetts", and it's about food insecurity in Massachusetts. This is a real problem, as we learned from the recent Brookline Foundation report. And I've been told that food insecurity in the Commonwealth is 71 percent higher than it was a decade ago. And that's according to a 2014 Status of Hunger report. This event is going to be in Brookline. It's going to feature Ellen Parker, who's the Executive Director of Project Bread. It's going to take place on Thursday, March 19th, this Thursday, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Community Room in 1501 Beacon Street.
My next item is that Friday is the vernal or spring equinox. Around midnight, day and night will have been nearly equal. And because of that, Saturday, March 21st, is the first day of spring. And I note that we actually have sunshine and melting. And today, for the first time, I could see the fence in front of my house, which I found a great sort of barometer, I hope, of what's to come. On Sunday, March 22nd, at 2:00 p.m., at the Lars Anderson Auto Museum, the Brookline Historical Society is sponsoring a presentation based on travelogues of Isabel Anderson, who was the owner of the estate, and who wrote extensively about her travels, which were also extensive, with her husband, who was a career diplomat, Lars Anderson. So that's 2:00 on Sunday afternoon. And also on Sunday, and it's at 2:30, there will be a chamber music concert in Honeyman Hall at the main library with the Gio Coso Trio. And that trio includes Brookline resident Steve Centuria, playing the clarinet. On Wednesday next week, at 7:00 p.m. in this room, sixth-floor Town Hall, the Licensing Review Committee will hold a public hearing for comments on proposed licensing conditions for registered marijuana dispensaries. And also on Wednesday evening, at 6:30 p.m., at the Baker School Auditorium, there will be a forum to discuss the 2016 school budget with Superintendent Bill Lupini and Deputy Superintendent Peter Rowe and members of the school committee. On Thursday, at the Coolidge Corner Theater, there's a screening of a film about Alzheimer's disease, sponsored by the Council on Aging and Brookline Can. And I believe some free tickets are still available, but you have to go online to www.goddardhouse, G-O-D-D-A-R-D-H-O-U-S-E dot org. On Friday, March 27th, from 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. in the Heath School Cafeteria, the Brookline Education Foundation will hold the 2015 Trivia B. And in case you hadn't noticed it, today is St. Patrick's Day, and if you're in Boston, evacuation day.
That's right. Forgot about evacuation day.
About that. No parade today.
You can see who's wearing the green and who forgot.
Forgot about St. Patrick's Day, too.
Well, probably I might not have if I hadn't had the responsibility to record what was going on, so there.
Lot going on. Wow.
Yeah, right. I think maybe the spring in the air, I hope, is going to pull us through, and all that snow will go away.
I wish there was a lot more spring in the air, but...
Right. Everybody's starting to come out of hibernation, so...
Yeah, right. Sort of a psych, maybe wearing a psychological breakthrough, at least.
Well, very good. Thank you, Selectmen DeWitt. We're on to our miscellaneous calendar. The first item of business is Item A, which is the question of approving the minutes of March 10th. Any edits or comments? I had none.
Nope.
Perfect score. All right. Congratulations, Kate McGilvery. And move on to Item B, which is the question of approving and executing an agreement in the amount of $9,730 with Public Archaeology Laboratory to provide preservation consulting services to submit to the National Register, to submit a National Register nomination for Hancock Village. Ms. Steinfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director. As the Chairman indicated, I'm here requesting that you execute a contract between the Town and Public Archaeology Laboratory, or PAL, which has been selected as a result of actually two RFP processes. PAL will complete and submit a nomination form to have Hancock Village placed in the National Register of Historic Places. Most of the research has already been done over the years by preservation planning staff, but PAL will consolidate all the information and complete the form at a cost of $9,730, with a deadline of 12 weeks.
And I'm going to make an observation, that I think this is an unfortunate delay, because I know that when this is completed, at the end of 12 weeks, it will go to the state, and the Mass Historic Commission will sit on it until it times out the waiting period to submit it to the federal government. And I'm very disappointed that it hasn't been initiated at least a year ago or earlier. But I certainly will support it now.
Anything further? All right. I move that we approve and execute an agreement in the amount of $9,730 with Public Archaeology Laboratory, Inc., to provide preservation consulting services and to complete and submit to the National Register, I'm sorry, to the National Registry nomination for Hancock Village. All in favor, say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Next item is the question of authorizing the Department of Planning and Community Development to submit an application to the Mass Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division, for up to $250,000 in competitive grant fund, in competitive grant funding to make energy efficiency and renewable energy improvements to town and school properties. Ms. Steinfeld, again.
Thank you. The Planning Department was just notified that we are, in fact, eligible to pursue this grant under the Green Communities Act. We are eligible because we have submitted all the appropriate documentation regarding the initial grant. And that's thanks to the efforts of Senior Planner Laura Curtis Hayes and Deputy, so, I'll get it, Deputy Town Administrator.
Melissa.
Melissa Goff. We'll get used to it. We are working with the Building Department to generate a list of projects that are appropriate for our school and municipal buildings. The project, the application is due March 27th, and I apologize for that, but again, we were just notified. So I respectfully request that you either execute the form before you, the certification of application, or designate the Town Administrator to execute it on your behalf.
Can I just ask a question? This is not in any way connected to the plan for the, come on, Singletary project?
No, no. This is to retrofit buildings, and we'll...
This is a future, would be for a future project.
Right.
Yeah.
We actually don't even know which projects yet, but...
Devotion School, maybe, on the list?
I don't know if it is yet, but I'll certainly raise it with the Building Department.
Selectmen Daley.
Yeah, my question was, did this have to be to do with buildings? Because I was wondering about more of the lead streetlights. I mean, we've made some progress on the lead streetlights, and, you know, it seems to me that they're a very good thing to do in terms of energy efficiency, and I'd like to see that continue to progress.
That is, in fact, eligible, and I will convey it to the Senior Planner, who will work with DPW to place that on the list.
Okay, thank you.
I'm noticing also that the incremental cost for electric or hybrid cars is available, and I know we're planning on buying some, is eligible. If you look on page 66 at the top.
I will convey that as well. Maybe make Building Department's life a lot easier.
Just the incremental costs, though.
The incremental costs.
Because we had cut, you know, the proposed budget cuts a number of new vehicles, but...
Right, but we're still purchasing vehicles.
Right, yep.
So if we can get a portion of it subsidized by the grant.
Good.
It's good stuff.
Good point, Selectmen Waschinsky. Okay, if there's nothing further, I'm going to move that we authorize the Department of Planning and Community Development to submit an application to the Mass Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division, for up to $250,000 in competitive grant funding to make energy efficiency and renewable energy improvements to town and school properties. All in favor, say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We have two temporary alcoholic beverage licenses to consider. I'll do them together. The first is a, first is that I move that we grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to Puppet Showplace Theater in connection with the Puppet Showplace Puppet Slam, that sounds a little cruel, to be held on March 21st, 2015, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at 32 Station Street. The second is that I move that we grant a permit to serve alcoholic beverages on town property, non-sales, at Lars Anderson Auto Museum in connection with a corporate dinner reception to be held April 4th, 2015, 5:30 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 15 Newton Street. All in favor of those two temporary alcoholic beverage licenses, say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Moving on to our main calendar, Item 5 is going to be postponed at Selectmen Daley's request.
Yeah, the ladies who are promoting this wanted to be here and couldn't make it tonight, but I'm working with them to do a draft resolution for us, and we should have something soon. And they're able to be here next week.
Good, thank you.
It shouldn't say City of Cambridge.
Oh.
The one in our packet said City, it was City of Cambridge.
Yeah, well, that was just a, that was a sample.
Sample, yeah.
I did read the sample, and I'm anxious to hear more about this program. So thank you for working on that, Selectmen Daley. Moving on to Item 6, which is the review of departmental budgets for the 2016 financial plan. We begin with the Fire Department. I see Chief Ford is here. And if you would, just give us an overview of your budget request for fiscal year 2016.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, the budget for 2016, as it stands, the total request, we see our overall budget actually reduce a little bit this year through several different areas. Personnel costs actually have increased a little bit because of different steps as firefighters reach different steps. But at this point in time, the budget as planned has the elimination of one position, so that helps to augment that increase. There's also a decrease in longevity this year. Some senior firefighters retired and replaced with junior firefighters, so we see savings there. We also see a savings in service of $3,000. Couple other areas, we do have some increases, I'm sorry, services increased by $3,000. Supplies, we have an increase in supplies also, but we did have a substantial capital decrease. So the overall budget decreases next year for $66,920, as stands. I will say that before the Advisory Subcommittee last week, they voted unanimously to reinstate that one position, that firefighter position. So if that were to hold true, that would bring my budget pretty much even. We're showing a $66,000 decrease, and that's the cost of the firefighter position.
Did they indicate how they were going to pay for that?
They did not.
Okay.
What was their reasoning there, Chief?
I can't tell you what, I don't know what was on their minds. They asked me about the reduction and how I felt about losing a position, which I'm not in favor of. I was actually wanting to increase my department by one. So personally, I'm not in favor of that. The other problem lies with when you decrease, especially one firefighter. We have minimum manning levels, so one firefighter missing, many of the times, that would create an overtime. So the overall savings wouldn't be the $66,000 budgeted for that position. You'd have to also factor in increased overtime costs. So I think they looked at that as an overall and made the decision not to decrease.
Do you, or I see Anthony's here, have you worked out what you think that overtime might be? So what the savings from decreasing one position would actually be if you factor in the overtime that would be added on?
I have not run an actual report on that. Off the top of my head, I would speculate it would be about 25 percent. Based on numbers we've run in the past, what happens when one person is cut, or how many times do we require at least one overtime?
So you're suggesting you deduct 100 percent of the person, then add back 25 percent for overtime?
That's what I feel off the top of my head.
Okay.
I can run that report and give you an accurate number. Based on last year's numbers, we could determine on any given group what one person missing, how often that would cause an overtime.
I would love to hear it at some point, if you can get that.
I have a question.
Go right ahead. I don't know if the Chief has finished with his presentation, but...
Oh, okay, go ahead. I can wait.
Well, the override, if the override were to go through and everything was restored, there is that one position, and we also lost money for one command vehicle. So that isn't a budget, should the override be successful.
Did you want that command vehicle to be a hybrid?
No.
There might be a grant.
When, one day when we had the large fire we had on Beacon when I first came here, one of our chiefs, off-duty chiefs, was called in to man the rest of the community, which is common practice, and it happened to be Deputy O'Connell, who was about 6'6". And there was only one vehicle available for him to drive, and it was the Prius. And I think some people thought it was pretty comical when he had to get out of that car, so...
The seat just doesn't go back far enough?
So that's the...
There are some SUVs and things, though, that are hybrids.
I'm sorry.
There are some SUVs and things that are hybrids.
There, Rob, when you get a vehicle the size that we need for a command vehicle and the equipment that's carried, they do make an SUV.
Yeah.
Very expensive.
Okay.
Looking over some other things, just to recap on this year, some of the high points of the Fire Department. Several things I could talk about, but we have expanded the use of technology within the department. We try to, we're striving to do that more and more every day, and we are making headway. We certified five new EMTs again, as we try to do each year. We also have three additional EMTs with the last five-person hire that we did. So we're raising our numbers all the time with EMTs, which is a great benefit to the citizens, having more EMTs respond to their medical calls. We provided the same or better service than the year before when you look at our numbers, especially our response time has continued to improve. We're always below the minimum requirement for, in a good way, for the NFPA for response time, for our initial response, and for our full-on assignment. We are continuing the long process of updating rules and regulations, getting that in a format for you all to see. We have a new Ladder 2 and Engine 5 that are currently being built, and looking forward to working on a committee for a new tower down the road. But those apparatus are in production right now. We're expecting delivery sometime late summer on the engine, early fall, I'm hoping, on the ladder truck. And it's sorely needed. We actually have had a little bit of a crisis going on last week, where all three of our ladder trucks were out of service, in need of repairs. And so we're in a little bit of a bind, but we're looking forward to getting that new truck back, getting it and getting it in service. We've done a lot of training this year, as we always do, improved our training division, improved our SOPs. We're also, I'm happy to report, we've had, we started that grant that I had been awarded, we were awarded from the federal government. Ten firefighters and officers went to the Instructor 1 Training Program. It was delivered at Hammond Street, put on by the Fire Academy. They attended that and took their exam about two weeks ago. And just last week, additional 10 started the Instructor 2 Program. And that goes, today was their second day. They're doing that for the next three Tuesdays. And then they will take their exam in May. All those individuals receive Train the Trainer training, which is designed to bring them up to the instructor to be able to teach certain skills. And they will be getting most of that training, again, on Hammond Street, with one day at the Fire Academy. So we will have roughly additional 20 certified fire instructors within the department when this is done. We also sent eight members, eight members actually went on their own time. Boston was very gracious in inviting them to some training, and they were trained in rope rescue, high-angle rescue, confined space rescue, and trench rescue. And all those programs were put on at Boston, but funded through UASI. And then UASI had an eight-day structural collapse course. We sent, we covered those eight individuals to go to that class. So now we have eight members, a total of, I think, 11 that are trained in all those disciplines of technical rescue. And that is very important for the citizens here, and also for the UASI community. They're building basically a team concept where we all can help each other. We can start our own rescues, but we can get help from the neighboring communities that are all involved in this one big training program. So it's worked out very well. We're also sending some of those individuals to some other UASI-funded training to advance with those skills that they already learned in heavy rigging, safety officer, and task force leaders for those rescue teams. Looking forward to next year, we are going to continue, we're trying to do officer training now. Each year, we try to get the officers in on their own, either singly or as groups, and give them some additional training, have some informal discussions. We try to do this with them each year. We have chief-level officer training meetings. We are going to continue with our EMT program and training new EMTs. We're looking to continue with our quest for the new maintenance shop and training facility that is currently under the study. And I've been in touch with the architectural firm that's doing it. It's almost complete, should be within the next few weeks. But we're looking forward to next year in taking that further and being able to explain our whole program and what we're looking for in the following year's capital plan. That's pretty exciting. We would like to see that come to fruition. We're also looking to rehab two engines next year. Engine 1, a frontline engine, and Engine 15, which is one of our reserves, keeping our fleet up to date. Once we get over this little ladder crisis, I hope, and tune our apparatus in, we'll be in pretty good shape. So that's what I have going forward.
Selectmen DeWitt, I'll cut you off before...
Yeah, I'm sorry. My question was really thinking about the firefighter position, and just needing to understand for my own purposes, or just so that I get it, in your program description, you describe the fire prevention, I guess, component with assigned staff of 115 firefighters. Now, in eliminating this position, is that meaning 114 firefighters?
Yes. Those are, 115 is the number of firefighters, is that right?
Right, right. And this is a firefighter position, I get that.
Correct.
So it would be down to 114?
Correct.
Okay, and at this moment in time, how many unfilled positions do you have?
Two.
Two. So that means you'll, you actually are at 113 right now.
Correct.
And you would be able to go up to 114 unless the override passes, in which case you can have all of the firefighters you need?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to get that detail worked out.
We are down two right now, but we have two retirements in the next two months, and we have an additional individual that is probably going to be leaving us. So we'll be down five by June.
Five positions. And in fairness, and I'm sorry about pushing this point, but I do believe you typically do have three to five vacant positions at any given moment in time. Would that be accurate?
Since I've been here, I've made my best effort to try and fill positions.
And I think we have supported you in that effort.
I don't like unfilled positions.
Sure.
But we can't fill one or two at a time. It's not conducive to the training environment.
Right, right.
Especially, last time, we hired five, and we did hire off the layoff list. It was a little different. But typically, we're sending them to 10 weeks of training.
Right.
We want to have at least four, if not more. But going forward, when I get my next two retirements, I will be before you soon looking to fill those positions.
Sure, I understand. I just wanted to make it clear that it is really very desirable for us to pass this override so you have full capacity, but you have a very successful track record of managing, using your overtime and other resources to provide good fire safety.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Chief, is the $75,000 decrease in equipment maintenance budget because of the new equipment that we're expecting? Is that, is that how I should read that?
Wherever you say.
Summary of subprograms, equipment maintenance is a $75,000 decrease from previous year's budget.
Seventy-five thousand?
Eighteen percent decrease.
I'm not seeing that off the top of my head.
Budget request in FY 2015 was $417,626. Budget request '16 is $342,000. $75,000 change, eighteen percent decrease.
So primarily, that's driven by a decrease in utilities. And then also, last year, they purchased a vehicle in equipment maintenance that they're not purchasing in FY '16.
Forty-five thousand.
So it's capital.
Capital outlay decrease.
It's a vehicle that they already bought.
Right, so, but should I read that, that we don't need as much in maintenance because we have new equipment, new capital?
No. It includes that vehicle, right? Capital's match.
So the decrease is...
Oh, I see, I see. It's in the capital in the equipment maintenance program.
Correct.
Okay, I see. Okay. Thanks. Can I ask you a quick question, too? Is drone technology, is that coming to fire departments? And is that something that we should be having? I mean, I don't know if there's a search and rescue aspect to it. If we needed a drone right now for a rescue operation, would we have it?
I know of no department in this state that would have one. I don't know if the state police have that technology available yet. It isn't something that has...
I don't think you can...
That has come out in the fire service as an overall new hot technology.
I think we're within an area that you, the FAA doesn't even allow them in city areas like this.
Supposedly, these regulations are being changed, and it's just something that's occurred to me that I haven't heard a request for that in our public safety departments yet, and it probably will, I guess.
I don't see it in the near future.
Selectmen Daley?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One, I want to say, you made reference to this briefly, but I think we should say the number, your response time, the actual in 2014, was just 3 minutes and 15 seconds. And that is excellent, and I want to congratulate you and the whole department on that response time.
Thank you.
And I often tell people proudly how much better our department is... And I often tell people proudly how much better our department is than some of the surrounding communities because of that rapid response time.
Believe me, I brag about it all the time.
Anyone else?
Excuse me. I think it's also important to note that not only do we get there in that time, we get there with appropriate number of firefighters. You know, that makes a big difference. I know myself, I know of communities that are not as fortunate and the citizens don't have that kind of protection. And they're talking longer response times, and then they're getting two guys there. And it really makes a difference having adequate number of people. As I'm sure you've seen this year, we've had a number of fires this year that could have been catastrophic had we not been there in a timely fashion with the appropriate number of people.
Selakman Franco?
I want to add to the congratulations of Selakman Daly. Not only do you get to fires in a rapid pace, you contain them to the origin. I note in the indicators here that you confine that fire to the original building. They don't spread to surrounding structures. And that is an untold story that I think you deserve a lot of compliments for.
Thank you.
I also want to ask, you talked a lot about the... Over the past couple of years, I was wondering if you could give us an update on where that stands?
It's funny that you mention that, because in some, one of my objectives for next year is to implement a program. If I may, first, I'll touch quickly on the firefighter one, two, to give you another example, as I have presented to you. I'm proud of what my guys are doing. Either last week or next week, I'm sorry, I'm not sure for certain, they have arranged through our training division, on their own, they've gone to the training division, certain guys, none of them required to have that certification. Talked to the training division, can you arrange this? They've been practicing on their own, training for this exam, and they are on their own, they're taking this exam, it's going to be administered in Brookline, but they're doing this on their own to better themselves. And I think that's a testament to them. When I first came here, I believe we had a total, there are many certifications you can get for... To thirteen now. We had a total of seven. And I believe right now, especially, well, after these instructors, we're probably going to be in the 90-plus range in a short amount of time. And we have firefighters going for it now. So we might even top 100 within the next month. And again, it's a testament to the firefighters, a lot of them are doing this all on their own time so that they have this certification. As far as the physical fitness program, I would like to see that expanded. You did give us some seed money, I think, a budget before last. One of the things that we found, we did send some trainers away to get peer fitness training, and they were able to purchase some equipment. To get equipment that lasts for any reserve amount of time is quite expensive. And it really would be beneficial to us, and maybe we can talk in the next budget cycle on having a continued source of some funding, because it's not something you can do once. We got our workout areas cleaned up, modernized a little bit, we bought some equipment, but that's it. We really need to take it to the next step.
Get some more pieces of equipment so that they could have the same equipment at each fire station. And then they could send out a weekly, here's your, you know, here's your plan for this week. Right now, they have some equipment that doesn't work, some older pieces that don't work that well, then they have some of the newer stuff, but it tends to vary from place to place, and that's certainly something. I mean, I, personally, I think it pays for itself, because, you know, this is a, they're carrying over 100 pounds into buildings in equipment. So you get knee injuries, you get back injuries. And, you know, if people are in better shape and we don't have those injuries or have lesser injuries, you know, I think it's worthwhile. So I would, I'm certainly very supportive of us trying to find a way to get some more of that equipment.
A lot of the equipment that we have up until the amount we bought with what was left of all that money is really bought by the firefighters, brought in from home or purchased with their own funding. It would be good to have more equipment and consistent equipment in each station. I just read a report within the last week that had come out, a short report, but it talked about physical fitness for firefighters, being ready, and the increase in injuries working out. But it went on to say that those injuries are usually relatively minor, result in, you know, a strain here and there, something like that, low amount of out-of-work injuries. On the flip side, much better off and prepared for fighting fires and doing the laborious work that's involved, and the reduction in long-term out-of-work injuries is reduced substantially by having workout programs and being in fit, in shape.
Selakman Wyszynski?
This is a question I've asked on other occasions and other venues. We're maintaining a system of box alarms, you know, the old call boxes, is that still relevant in this day and age? How do you feel about them?
Most of my career, previous to being here, I wasn't exposed to those boxes. They were, they were gone along before my time. But when I come up to Metro Boston, they're very common. All the communities around, many of them have the boxes. They're still in great working order. So I haven't seen a need to get rid of them or to go down that road. It isn't like we've spent a lot to maintain them, it doesn't seem to be. I don't get a lot of reports of false alarms on the street boxes. So I haven't seen a need to get rid of them at this point in time. I know their tradition. They do serve a purpose. There would be a lot of changeover from the box system if we went, if we took, got rid of all of them, it would be a big task. A lot of that probably placed on the businesses themselves. So I don't see the need right now, but I think down the road, if they started becoming a maintenance issue, we'd have to look at that.
I know in Washington DC, if you walk around, you see the old boxes, they've taken them over as art kinds of things, art displays.
I have had occasion, though, to call 911 on my cell phone, and it takes a while, because you don't get to Brookline right away.
You go to the state.
You go to the state, and, you know, then, you know, you have to go back and forth with, like, what town, and you're saying, well, Brookline, you know? And that seems to take a while before you actually get through. So it's not as quick as you might think.
Seen the same thing.
That is being looked into statewide and here in Brookline. We're trying to address that concern. I can tell you myself, I was in Foxborough one day in the campground, and I needed an ambulance for a person in my party. And when I got the operator, I said, give me Foxborough Fire. They said, well, what's the problem? I said, just give me Foxborough Fire. Well, what's your problem? You know, so it can be, a lot of people don't realize that, that you are getting the state police. And actually, if you're on a bordering community, I've been along the southern border of Massachusetts, and you can call 911 and get the Rhode Island State Police. Now you try to deal with that.
Yeah.
They are looking at a way to address that and direct it more precisely to the responding jurisdiction. It's not there yet.
Well, if they can pinpoint your cell phone in every other way, they should be able to do that, I mean, for every other purpose. Okay, anything further for the chief? Thank you, chief. Appreciate your...
Thank you.
Very comprehensive presentation. Move on to our library budget, and I know Mrs. Sloman just walked in. Michael, you going to join us, too?
I'll say yes. Is there any questions to be added?
Thank you, appreciate that.
Good evening.
Good evening. Why don't you give us an overview of your budget request for fiscal year 2016, please?
Sure. So I'm Sarah Sloman, I'm the library director. And our budget this year shows a 1.6% increase, which is $60,268. We actually are up for a cut, if the override fails, of $22,000. The increase is a reflection of the town moving our collective bargaining increases out of the collective bargaining reserve pool and into our actual budget to help preserve our stated certification with the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. I think you're all familiar with the fact that we have to appreciate a slight increase in our appropriations every year or sustain cuts on par with all other town departments, or we risk losing our certification in that program. So that's why the, you'll see that we have an increase here at the beginning of the year. Normally, that money would have been transferred over later in the year as the collective bargaining steps moved along. So the $22,000 cut, the impact on that would be that we would lose half of an FTE. It is coming out of our personnel line. It is my contention that we are already very short-staffed, and that would be a tough cut for us to sustain. We have appreciated some efficiencies due to retirements and other, we had one very senior staff member pass away sadly. And so some of, you'll see in the summary, that some of our positions, we lost a librarian four and a librarian two. We are hoping to replace those with two librarian threes, and that still would have kept us actually under last year's appropriations. There are some sort of gentle increases that are cost of service things that we don't have control over, increase in our delivery services, wireless communications. And I think that's, that's pretty much it. This is my first rodeo, so I'm not really sure how long I'm supposed to talk.
Was that long enough? I don't know. Perfect length, thank you. Questions for Selakman? Selakman Daly?
Yeah, so tell me more about this part-time position that would be restored if the override passes.
Well, it's all on paper, of course, for now. If the money is restored, my staffing would remain the same at the library at all three locations. If we lose the $22,000, we would need to figure out who in the part-time personnel pool would be laid off, whether that would be one halftime person or several quarter time people. That's, so that's the impact that would have. So if that $22,000 were to remain in the budget or be restored to the budget, then staffing would remain the same. Essentially, it's a level-funded budget at the heart of it, without the cut.
So that's not an empty position?
No. It's not an empty position.
I would love to know, though, your thoughts coming in to a new system, and what do you see the strengths and minuses of the Brookline Library system?
Well, I think we provide exemplary service and selection, for sure. Our collections are excellent. I think for the most part, our customer service is above average. We are short-staffed. We, at one time, had, in the not-so-distant past, 50 full-time employees, and we are now down to 40. So it's difficult to provide the same level of service with so many, such a large decrease in our staffing. So I think, I think that's a weakness. I mean, I'll come right out and say it, I think that we are dangerously understaffed. We rely heavily on volunteers who have been with us for a long time, some of whom are getting older and might not stay with us. So if we lose a whole castle of volunteers, there's going to be a lot of work to be done at the library, unless we can find other folks to fill those jobs. So I think that, that would be my, my chief concern as far as a weakness. Our staffing plan is weak, and it's probably the most important link in the chain, because we can put the most amazing materials in the world in the building, but if we don't have enough people to open the doors, no one's going to be able to use them.
I noticed that circulation and attendance was down slightly this year. And, you know, there were some people who've predicted that for a while due to, you know, digital publishing and other factors. I don't necessarily believe that myself, but do you have a thought on whether this, whether we've kind of topped out on library circulation now, and maybe, maybe those people are correct and we are going to start to see decreases?
I do have a lot of thoughts on that topic, and I'll try to keep it short. I can say that if you look at library circulation historically, you're going to see vast increases anytime there's a recession or a depression, because people are pinching pennies, so they're not purchasing books, they're not maybe going to services they would pay for, like movies, or even out to dinner, they might come as a family to a library movie night where refreshments are provided instead. So if you look at our historic circulation for the past seven or eight years, you'll see that we went like this. And then as the economy started to get better, we started to decline slightly. I don't think that we will see, I don't think that we'll see a precipitous decline due to the encroachment of digital media at all. We're seeing our ebook circulation just go up and up and up every year. The demand gets higher and higher. So people are applying the same home economics principles to digital media as they are to traditional media, saying, why should I pay $19.99 or $9.99 from Amazon when I can get it from the library for free, when I fund it with my tax dollars? So I think, you know, one of the primary tasks that the trustees have put to me for the next couple of years, for my performance review at six months, was to see what I could do about turning the circulation and the attendance around. And I think we're already making great strides. I've been working very closely with Colin Wilkins, our interim collection development supervisor, and identifying areas where we're weak and areas where we're sort of overfed and trying to make sure we're providing exactly what the community wants, rather than sort of what I think they want.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a comment. A friend actually commented to me that when you Google Brookline, the public library is like one of the top hits. And just for curiosity, I just Googled Brookline. And I want you to know that the public library is number five, which I think is pretty impressive. And I think it says a lot about the interest that this community has. And obviously, you're doing a certain amount of work online. I know people are checking to see if their reserve book is in and all kinds of things like that. But Google has been tracking you.
Yes. Well, they're tracking all of us, aren't they? If only they could figure out where we were when we called 911, everything would be perfect.
Right.
Anything further? Selakman Franco?
Sir? Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just on that note, I just want to share something.
Michael, would you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Michael Burstein, Chair of Library Trustees. Somebody who I don't know, but six days ago on Twitter, as we look for these things, posted the following comment. First visit to Brookline Public Library today, very impressed, Brookline is the earthly paradise. Consider that when you're thinking about our library budget.
I like that one. Put that in the next annual report, Master Kleckner.
I read that one.
Well, not strictly part of the operating budget. I know that, that the libraries are involved in sort of a, a community charrette about the future of the Coolidge Corner Library, and wondered if you could provide us an update on what the discussion is about and maybe some of what you've heard so far.
Absolutely. So just to anyone who isn't aware of what's happening in the process, we're basically in the beginning of research stage into what the library is providing compared to what the library should be providing at the Coolidge Corner location. The Lib, pardon me, the Brookline Library Foundation funded a consultant, Ruth Cole, who was for a long time the COO of the Boston Public Library, to research and write what's called a building program. That's the first building block in the steps required by the Mass Board of Library Commissioners to apply for state construction grants. So the building program looks at what the library is providing and then applies a set of standards that's accepted by the commissioners, and then finds the vector between what we have and what we should have, and what we're giving and what we should be giving. And so that program is actually complete. I have a rough draft of it on my desk. The committee that's overseeing that process is meeting next Friday with Ruth, and then it will go off to the state for approval. After that, the next step is funded by the town. We have a $50,000 appropriation already approved to move on to feasibility. So this spring, we'll be convening a committee of seven to start looking into what can be done on that site to meet the needs of the community with a 20-year horizon. So we've had an amazing, as you said, a public charrette. We've had amazing feedback from the public about what they're looking for. I have a presentation that I give about the future of libraries, and it's been wonderful to see people respond to the ideas there, non-traditional collections, library... Non-traditional collections, library of things. So some things libraries are circulating are seeds to preserve our heirloom seed collections. Cake pans is very popular. Cake pan libraries. So anyone who's had children or grandchildren or likes making children's cakes knows, you probably only need that Elmo pan once. So wouldn't it be nice to not have to go buy it? We also are offering libraries green spaces on the roofs. There's been some amazing work in urban areas with providing green spaces that, you know, capture all the rainwater and feed the grass and have solar panels to care for our environment. Just all kinds of really amazing things. So we're really trying to get people's minds wide open to what the possibilities are that we could be offering.
So what's, what's your timeframe on that? What are your expectations in terms of the Coolidge Corner branch?
The Commissioners' grant opens next summer for application, and they announce the winners in January of '17. That's the tentative timeline. So we're actually very far ahead of the game. We were complimented by the Commissioners for getting all of our consulting and starting to get our architects lined up because about this time next year, every library in Massachusetts is going to be scrambling for architects that specialize in libraries, and we will have already completed that phase. So I guess once we find out whether or not we've gotten the grant, that's a huge piece of it. The state is willing to fund up to 50% of the project if you get the grant. And the Brookline Library Foundation used this year's gala, mingle, to launch, they're starting a new capital fundraising campaign similar to the model used in 1999 when they funded the renovations of the main library. So...
So this sounds like this grant is more generous than the grant for the main library.
They have changed the guidelines. That's correct. It used to be 30%.
Right, yeah.
And now it's 50.
And we funded it, if I recall, it was like a third, a third.
That's right.
Town funded a third, they funded a third, and then private...
Foundation.
Yeah, the Library Foundation funded a third.
That was quite a, quite an effort.
Yes, it was. So that model's still appealing.
Good. Anything further from Ms. Slimer? Thank you. Good, good job for your maiden voyage chair.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Next, we're going to take up the departmental budget for the Planning and Community Development Department and Ms. Steinfeld again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unlike the preceding department heads, I can say that the Planning Department is not programmed for any cuts, and I'm very appreciative of that. We are, there are several minor, although nonetheless important, increases proposed for the department. One is a $500 increase in supplies to support the Preservation Commission's award ceremony, which is conducted annually. And the others relate to our new responsibilities for the Zoning Board of Appeals, specifically credit service charges, advertising, and a folding machine, which will help us distribute a significant increase in notices to the public. So in keeping with the library director's short speech, that's my speech, and I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
All right, Slakman-Dewitt.
Yeah, I have heard quite a lot from the preservation community, and as a result, I feel obliged to make the following statement. And it has to do with staffing for the Preservation Commission and the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission, which have been presented differently in, between 2013 and the 2016 financial plans. In 2013, preservation is listed as a separate sub-program equal to economic development and housing. In 2016, and this was also true in '15 and maybe '14, I didn't check, it's been demoted to a subset of planning and administration. The Preservation Commission actually has statutory authority that neither economic development nor housing, who are still listed as separate subprograms, possess, and both have more staffing at higher compensation. Preservation staffing has been the same for the last two decades and has only increased from 1.5 to 1.8 since the Neighborhood Conservation District bylaw was approved. At the same time, the workload has more than doubled. By comparison, Cambridge has five preservation staff, fewer districts, and fewer demolition cases. The Preservation Commission is established as an historic district commission under Mass General Law's Chapter 40(c) and also as an historical commission under Mass General Law's Chapter 40, Section 8d. It has authority and powers to administer and to regulate local historic districts established in the town and to issue certificates of appropriateness under state statute and demolition delays under town bylaws and to provide administrative support to neighborhood conservation, the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission. And yet, the staff is described, regardless of qualification, as preservation planners, not even as a program director and a preservation planner. The senior preservation staff member is compensated at $10,000 less than any other senior program staff in planning and administration and planning and, and community development. What's even more devaluing of the Preservation Commission and its charge is the present recruitment notice, which is posted online in January 2015, specifies qualifications for the senior staff position as, quote, "a bachelor's degree and two years of experience in preservation or a closely related field," whatever that means. Not to mention, the job description is, quote, "to perform complex administrative and professional work in administering the town's local historic district, neighborhood conservation district, and demolition delay bylaws, and therefore also would include theoretically managing the present part-time staff member with a PhD. This is a person with a bachelor's degree and two years of experience." The current head or chief staff person is a Harvard graduate with a master's degree in preservation, 10 years as a preservation program administrator, and another 15 years in preservation fieldwork. I find this is a seriously shortsighted way of expressing the priorities for this commission and its very significant contribution to the town, and I am, as you can hear, not happy.
Thank you. Would you like to respond or...
Sure, I'll try to remember some of the points. In terms of the description of the department within the budget book, actually, the structure of the department has not changed. The department consists of three divisions, and it has for several years. Economic development, comprehensive planning, and regulatory planning. Within comprehensive planning is both housing and community development, and within regulatory planning is staff support to Zoning Board of Appeals, which is quite recent, planning board, and preservation. So in that regard, nothing has changed. My understanding is preservation was incorporated into the regulatory division about 10 years ago. Obviously, I don't know the details.
It has not been so described, however.
Quite honestly, it was described incorrectly because it was, did not reflect the actual organization within the department.
And did the Preservation Commission agree to this planned change that you say took place 10 years ago?
Well, I wasn't here 10 years ago.
That's correct. And I doubt seriously that they were consulted or agreed.
You know what? Okay, this, this is, I don't think this tone is really appropriate.
So any, any other points that you'd like to...
Yeah, a few other points. In terms of the job description, for those of you who don't know, one of the preservation planners did in fact resign several months ago. She has offered to continue working part-time until we filled the position. The job description is established by the HR board. I cannot make, I am not allowed to make changes. That's what HR has advised me, and that's what I proceeded. We did in fact post the position. We got 59 applications, many very impressive. We're in the process of interviewing five people with a screening committee I established. We've had one interview, and I can tell you that that person was extraordinarily qualified, far exceeded the basic qualifications that are listed. I quite honestly have issues with the job descriptions for all the planners in the department, but it's established and quite, and Brookline is a prestigious enough department that we attract very good candidates. And I know that we will fill the planner position with a highly qualified, energetic person. Also, in terms of the two planners, I understand that they each have different levels of experience, and I don't want to get into any specifics, but they are, do have equal positions. They are both at the same grade and the same, perhaps, probably the same step. But that's the way it's been established. One is not higher than the other despite, well, I won't go beyond that. Were there any other issues that I didn't address?
I just think it's understaffed for the workload.
It's been a difficult few years. I started about a year and a half ago. We are in fact budgeted for 1.8 planners. The full-time planner, for various reasons, has not been full-time for at least a year and a half, personal and legitimate reasons, but even now, she works 22 hours a week. The most she's ever worked since I've been with the department has probably been 27 hours a week. That presents complications. Obviously, when we fill the position, which I expect to do probably in April, it will be full-time. Eight to five, Monday through Thursday, eight to 12:30 on Friday, plus overnight, night meetings.
I see Mr. Bachelor here. Do you want to, do you want to be heard on this?
Thank you. I think everybody understands the situation. We are really short.
Jim, would you introduce yourself for the recognition?
Jim Bachelor, and I'm a member of the Preservation Commission. I was chair until a week ago, and I'm still in the commission. We're really hurting for staff, and I just ask Board of Selectmen to, as strongly as they can, convey to our budget process that we need more. I don't feel that Jean's inability to be at work due to personal reasons is a satisfactory explanation for why we don't have two full-time staff. I think that's an absolute minimum at what I would call the core professional level. And, you know, I have seen in so many ways, whether it's through the Preservation Commission or the NCDs or other processes in the town, some of them kind of a related 40B phenomenon. People in this town hugely care about preservation and want it to be protected. It's at the heart of the core of why people come here, and I think we have to stand up and try to give it a little bit more support. So I just ask people to do that. We are really struggling. We are behind on all of the basic thresholds that one would look at, you know, minutes or months late at best. Reports are less prepared than they should be. We're, we're in a situation where regulations say in effect, if, if you don't deal with it, people automatically get their stuff approved. And I think people are all trying to do the best they can, but given its importance around this town and the expanding number of LHDs and NCDs and concern about the quality of our community, I think we have to find a way to put some more support to it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Other questions from members of the board?
I just think the budget should be amended so that there are two full-time positions.
Okay, so that's something that you can do as this budgeting process progresses.
Yeah, I'm just going on record.
No other questions from board members? I did have one. We've got, it looks like there's an increase in credit card services, and I'm wondering if we need to look at fees again to make sure that any increase in credit card services are being covered by the fees.
I'll be happy to do so. I do know fees were increased about a year ago, but obviously, we'll keep on top of that. The Plane Department is now accepting the fees for applications to ZBA.
Okay. Well, let's make sure we're not losing money on that, on that transaction. Slakman-Daly?
Yeah, my question is, when Fran Price retired, we had someone who was highly skilled in the affordable housing area, who was kind of proactively, I think, seeking out opportunities. And how are we doing now?
It was a deliberate decision not to fill Fran's position for a number of reasons, largely because of the nature of the block grant program and the home program. It's increasingly difficult to sort of stockpile money so that we can invest in a given project. The money has to be spent quickly. So some of the projects that Fran did in the past could not be done now. So we have not filled the position. Virginia Bullock, who is our housing planner, and Joe Viola, who is the Assistant Director for Community Planning, as well as Bruce Janest, consist, are our housing, are focused on housing. And right now, they're particularly focused on Beale Street and have provided extensive support to the Housing Authority on the Dummer Street project.
Speaking of Bruce, I see you're here, Bruce. Are you here because you expect to be heard? It's, it's not a hearing, and, you know, you, it's...
I'd like to make a comment regarding some staffing and position.
Anybody have any objection hearing from Bruce? You should note, he's an employee and, and one of our labor representatives, too. I have no objection to hearing from you, though, Bruce.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I want to bring to the attention, this will only be, I'm going to give you a little background information, and then I'll close things up.
I should say, say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bruce Janest, Rice Street. I am a housing planner in the Planning Department, and I'm also president of Asbe Local 1358, representing 375 town and school employees. So I want to bring to your attention of an ongoing staffing issue within the Planning Department, and I'm not talking about preservation. In 2011, the town administrator and the then-planning director eliminated an Asbe Local 1358 union-represented financial position. This position was eliminated without any consideration of bargaining the impact of such a move, a clear violation of the agreement between the town and Asbe Local 1358. The then-director of planning forced employees with intimidation.
Mr. Chairman, I object to this, please. This is a matter that is being litigated in the union environment, and I, I think it's unbiased myself.
Bruce, if it's not, if it's not budget-related, then...
This is budget-related because they're eliminating a position.
But it seems like you're here to air a union grievance, not to, not to, not to talk about the actual budget.
That's not my intent. I was giving some background.
Okay, well, if you can stick to, to the budget aspects of it, please.
A position was eliminated, and an individual left the Planning Department. It was a financial person. I filed labor charges against the town of Brookline. The town of Brookline, in turn, hired somebody part-time, less than 20 hours a week, excuse me, less than 19 hours a week, took union work, distributed to management people, brought in this part-time person, which was a total disaster. I have been working with the town since 2011 to rectify the situation, and we're in 2015. Recently, the town said, with Frank Maroni speaking to the town administrator, let's see if we could resolve this.
All right. I still, I don't see where you're going to our budget considerations, so...
They, they agreed to...
Bruce, thank you. If you, if you'd step, step down, please, because I understand what you're trying to do, but it's not, not the right forum for it.
I disagree, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further? Okay. I guess that's it.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Steinfeld. We are 10 minutes early for our next matter, which is a public hearing, so let's see if there's something later in the calendar that we can take up.
Can you do the warrant?
Yeah, why don't we do the warrant, Melissa? We're skipping forward to agenda item 11. That's the review and execution of the warrant for the May 2015 annual town meeting.
Good evening.
Let's go.
So you have in front of you the warrant. So I'll just run through some of the warrant articles that have been proposed under it. So the first few are kind of your annual wooden bar, human resources, collective bargaining, compensating balance, the annual warrant articles that we have, one through eight. Article nine is a proposal to increase town meeting membership to certain elected officials. Article 10 is a proposal by the Recreation Department about the living wage bylaw related to their part-time employees, mostly their summer, summer workers. Then you have a Crown Shield Local Historic District proposal. You have a proposal that you discussed last week on snow removal. Then you have two proposals related to... Then you have two proposals related to bottled water, one which looks to ask common victulers to offer tap water to patrons, and then the other one is pertaining to town use of bottled water. Then we have two that are related to solar. One is to extend the solar overlay district. We found a nice piece of land that the DPW wouldn't mind having a carport over, that we could use for additional solar. And then, so then, in addition to extending the zoning map, we'd also need to get an agreement to lease the land. Then we have a couple of proposals related to, one is related to 40B, and another one is related to eminent domain around Hancock Village, and then we wrap it up with a resolution pertaining to the Olympics.
It's going to be an interesting town meeting.
I have an observation, which I hope I did read correctly. It seems that the bottled water warrant article imposes fines for violations?
Yeah, I haven't read that one too cl, I think Alan might be able to tell you a little bit more about the...
Okay. And I don't think it's asking local businesses, it's mandating that local businesses offer tap water.
Yeah, right.
And that town departments not use any bottled water.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Any other questions about the process, or content, or description, without getting into the actual issues, which we're obviously not here to talk about tonight? Okay. Then I move that we execute the warrant for the May 26, 2015 Annual Town Meeting. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. We still have five minutes before, do you want, can we, you want to take?
Sure, we can get started, I guess.
Yeah, so, yeah, all the warrant articles are, are pretty perfunctory ones, right? So let's, let's tackle those.
First one's the toughest one.
So the first one is wooden bark, and that's an annual, basically, a town meeting in 2000 requires that this be the first warrant article at every town meeting. I told Len Weiss that when I come in front of the Advisory Committee, I will have no pens prepared for him.
Thank you.
And I have none for you as well.
Excellent, even better.
Then the next one is the collective bargaining agreements. As of today, there are none, so at this point, there's, there's no action to take on that. Number three is the, the authority for the Treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements, which I believe he currently does today. If you need him to speak more about it, we can ask him at his budget review. And then the fifth one is unpaid bills, as of right now, and I hope that this is true when we are towards the end of the process, there are none. And then Gary will be back later on tonight to talk about six. So at least as of right now, one, two, three, and five, if you wanted to take action on them, you're more than welcome to, or we can schedule it for another date.
But, well, we are having, this is considered our public hearing on those Articles one, two, three, and five, so I will ask if there's anyone here with any public comment, wants to make any comment on any of those warrant articles. No, don't see anybody.
I just have a question. Would you, would, is it appropriate for us to vote to, even though there might be a collective bargaining agreement that will come forward?
I think you can vote it.
In other words, I mean, we can vote no action and reconsider, yeah, right, okay.
Anybody want to vote these tonight, or anybody feel strongly that they should be held off? As I said, they're perfunctory, and I don't mind voting them myself.
Hold six until Gary comes up?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 we'll hold six, yeah, obviously. So, well, let's take Article one, then, and this is, would be a vote for favorable action, right?
Correct.
All right. So I move favorable action, that the Board of Selectmen recommend to town meeting favorable action on Article one, appointment of measurers of wood and bark. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Article two is the approval of collective bargaining agreements, and my, what I just heard Ms. Goff report is that there are none, so I think the vote would be for no action on Article two. So I move that this board recommend no action on Article two to town meeting. All in favor of no action, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Article three is annual authorization of compensating balances agreements. I know that we currently do have compensating balances agreements, so we would want favorable action to continue compensating balances. And I assume everybody knows what that is at this point. I think we're all sufficiently experienced with the budget to know that that's arrangements with banks where, where interest pays for some of the fees involved. So I move favorable action on warrant article number three, authorizing compensating balance agreements. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And finally, Article five, which we heard Ms. Goff report that there are no unpaid bills of prior fiscal year, so our proposal would be for no action on Article five. All in favor of no action, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I also vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us up to eight o'clock, so that was a good, efficient use of time. We can call our hearing that was scheduled for eight o'clock, which is the seasonal license renewal for Vine Right Grill, Grill in the Green, Lisa Wiesel manager, and this is the seasonal license that runs from April 1st to January 15th. I don't see Lisa here, so...
I think maybe our, the next one, our change...
Typically require the applicants to be here.
Yeah.
I think our change of manager person is here, the next one.
No, no, I know, for the next one, but I recognize her picture from the, from the license, but, well, why don't we hold, hold Item seven for a little bit and see if Bill Wiesel'll show up. And we'll take Agenda Item eight, which is the question of approving the application of Boston Hospitality SPVE LLC, DBA Holiday Inn of Brookline, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license for a change of manager from Glenn Voullumier, I always have a problem with his name, to Kelly Lejoy. Lejoie. And Ms. Lejoie, please, take the podium. How do you do?
Good.
Good. Well, the application's pretty straightforward. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your experience in the, in the industry, and particularly with respect to serving alcoholic beverages?
Okay. I've been in the industry for about 20 years. I worked for the management company prior about 10 years ago, worked at the Hilton in Plymouth, the Holiday Inn in Concord, New Hampshire, Salem, New Hampshire, the Gateway Conference Center in North Carolina, so, and of course, now at the Holiday Inn in Brookline. So, all of those establishments did have alcohol. I never had any issues with, at any of the properties.
Good. And are you aware that in Brookline, it is necessary that a manager be present at all times?
I do.
And so is there any change in, I think you guys have alternate managers at this point, is that correct?
Yes, I just, and actually, I just hired another manager, Jeff Turwilliger, who he just has gone through the whole process that I went through, so his application should be coming in as well.
So he's going to be here, too?
Yeah.
Good. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I, I think you probably have heard that we've had some issues at, at your establishment with not keeping up the paperwork that you need to keep up to.
Right.
And, you know, frankly, you're, it's a big enough place, I, I don't really think there's any excuse not to...
I agree.
Do the stuff you're supposed to do.
Yes, I already have my book together at the bar, and all the signs are posted, and so I assure you, there will be no issues. I came on in October, so...
Yeah, I noticed your, your references. Everyone was saying you were detail-oriented, so we'll look for you to, to keep on top of that.
Okay.
But the other issue that we like to stress with, on our liquor licenses is, we are very close to a lot of universities.
Right.
And that, that, you know, it's, we do take the service to underage people very seriously, and we expect you to do the same, and, you know...
We do have a lot of students, that BU is one of our, is a very large account, so we are used to having the, the students there, so, and they do get carded, so...
Okay. Even if they're with their parents, I think you still have that...
Yeah, no, no alcohol, no.
Any other questions? All right. I move that we approve the application of Boston Hospitality SPVE LLC for a change in manager, appointing Kelly Lejoie. Did I say that okay?
That's right.
Thanks. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Good, welcome.
Thank you.
I'll take Agenda Item number nine, which is the question of approving the application of 13 Geraldine Partners LLC, DBA Brick Wall Kitchen, for a common victula license at 224 Cypress Street, and also their application for an entertainment license. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tell us about your plans for 224 Cypress Street, and why this benefits the community.
Well, we're taking over the restaurant from Reader's Cafe, owned by Victor Barracat. He wants to consolidate his holdings, so to speak.
I'm sorry, would you introduce yourself for us?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Frank Shear.
Thank you.
And my partner, William White.
Good evening.
If you want to come stand in case I have a question for you?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we are, we feel that Brookline is an excellent town for, that we receive our offerings very enthusiastically. We, our background is, we, Williams been in the business for several years. I'm a fair, I'm a newcomer, relative newcomer to the food, food and beverage industry, having worked as a bookbinder for 28 years in Woburn. And it's a little bit of a change of career, but one that we enjoy. And what else would you like to know?
We didn't get a menu.
Yeah, tell us about your plans for it.
Okay, okay.
This is your chance to advertise.
It's our vast viewing.
We've got two people who live in the neighborhood, so...
And, and you know, two of us are neighbors of yours.
Oh, is that right?
Myself and Selectman Franco.
Beautiful neighborhood. Have you been to the, to the restaurant before?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I have to.
All right.
And I don't live that close. But it's a small town, so...
Seems they have a nice breakfast going on already. I was thinking of expanding on that a little bit, putting some of my own specialties forward, hoping to emphasize a weekend brunch pretty quickly, once we get our feet under ourselves. Expand the, we've been working with the Health Department, we're going to expand the lunch menu a little bit, a little bit more emphasis on some house specialty sandwiches, a nice lemon chicken breast filet with some garlic aioli, a little bit of tomato, red onion, spring greens. We'll be doing a nice panko encrusted salmon with some, a little bit of house tartar sauce, and hopefully a toasted sourdough or Kaiser roll, maybe a nice roast pork bami with a little bit of an Asian influence there. Maybe try to do dinners eventually, but I think that's a couple months down the road, and something we'll have to put a little bit of consideration to, a little bit of planning. Don't want to hop into that one without, out of a really good, solid plan under our feet, so...
One of the things we want to do with the, with the space is to have it exhibit art from the community and from private artists. It's got a beautiful brick wall that really lends itself to, to some nice fine art. My wife is an artist, and she's exhibited a lot of different places. She's got friends, but we'd also like to offer it up to the community, if there are some neighborhood artists or, or school groups, we'd like to exhibit art. We'd really like to entertain that as well. So, we'd like to make it, you know, sort of a cultural center as well as a small restaurant.
Understood. I see that your experience previously has been in the food truck industry, right?
That's right.
So, can you, just, show me, the idea here is that the food that you're serving is prepared on-site, and that you're not becoming a commissary for your, for a food truck industry, too, right?
No, the food truck is, is gone.
Right.
We are not doing the food truck anymore. We've upgraded from the food truck into a brick and mortar restaurant.
Okay.
For various reasons.
And there's no plans that this will become the commissary for an ongoing food truck business or anything, right?
We'll not see a food truck there, ever.
Good. Do you have plans for takeout or delivery?
Not necessarily delivery, although we really hadn't considered that. Takeout, yes. I mean, we'd like to, I mean, the restaurant is really too small to have, to have everybody dine in, so we, we feel for breakfast and lunch, there'd be a significant takeout business.
Okay. Sometimes delivery can become a little bit of a logistical problem in our, in our tight, dense neighborhoods, but takeout...
I don't see that working for us logistically either. It's such a small space, and it's very hard to stagger and maintain the food quality with a large delivery volume, so it's just something I wouldn't be interested in doing regardless.
Thank you.
I just, sort of a, you said that you're going to be serving breakfast and lunch. Your hours of operation are shown to 10:00 PM. Is that because you imagine that within some period of time, you will be using evening hours, or...
Perhaps weekend dinners, oops, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, perhaps weekend dinners, but until we really have our feet on the ground, we're not going to be doing that. We'll be getting into those little by little.
So...
I think the previous people, they, they had some weekend dinners as well, and so we would be...
But short-term, it's going to be like 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, or something along those lines?
Yeah, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
I see.
For the foreseeable future. And then we'll, and then we'll evaluate how things go.
When do you see yourself starting up?
We hope to start the 31st.
Wow.
Yeah, we, most of our plans are, are laid. We have yet, obviously, to acquire the permitting for the Town of Brookline, but once we do that, we can move full speed ahead.
Okay. Note that the entertainment license is just for radio and television?
Right.
Any other questions from members of the board? Selectman Franco?
I wonder if you've given any thought, or have any anticipation of what the delivery schedule will be for your establishment?
Yes, actually, we were just talking about this earlier. As of right now, we're taking on most of the previous occupants' accounts, so that we'll maintain roughly what they had. Deliveries are difficult, first of all, because if we're in service, you know, taking on a delivery, and it'd be in a neighborhood, I wouldn't want to start off on the wrong foot with the neighbors and have a truck trundling, trundling through the neighborhood. I don't think it's even allowed to at 6:00 AM or something. So we'd be looking at, I'd want any deliveries to be in sometime between the hours of 2:00 and 4:00 ideally, PM, to avoid that, weekdays only, so...
And then the bread people come early in the morning, even before opening, so their footprint will be very small.
And you, you'll also be competing with the Kirkmans across the street. Sometimes they have these trucks come in, but you'll get used to it.
Yeah. It's, it's a busy place, but it works well.
Get used to it.
I'm sure, you know, it will work in the future.
Very good. Anything further? I move that we approve the application of 13 Geraldine Partners LLC for a common victula license at 224 Cypress Street. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I further move that we approve the application of 13 Geraldine Partners LLC, holder of a common victula license at 224 Cypress Street, for an entertainment license to include radio and television. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Good luck, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Hope to see you there.
You'll see me.
You will. Next is a application for an increase in hours. The application is by respect to Hospitality LLC DBA Fairstead Kitchen, and they're seeking to change their hours. Well, we'll let them, let them explain it to us.
Before you start, I just want to let everybody know that I know Mr. Bowman. I went to high school with him, and I have filed some paperwork with the town clerk, just to let everybody know that we're classmates, so...
Thank you. Thank you. Hi.
Adam, go ahead.
My name is Adam Barnoskin with the Law Office of Robert Allen at Dr. Washington Street here in Washington Square. We come before the board tonight for an extension of hours. With me is Steve Bowman, who is one of the co-owners of Fairstead Kitchen. For those not aware of Fairstead Kitchen, it's located westbound on Beacon Street, between Williston and Washington Street. It's in the section of stores right in between Barcelon Wine Bar and Sanelo Salon. Steve and his partner, Andrew Foster, have been running Fairstead since late 2013, and they've had great reviews and a really warm welcome from, from the community and from local press. And it's a really popular spot for, for people here in Brookline, and also for people outside of Brookline to come as, as one of the many great locations in Washington Square. And as, as part of that, they've really found a, a niche in, within the restaurant industry itself, and, and all of these restaurants in Washington Square. And it's become a really popular place for those within the restaurant industry to come for, really for their after-work meal. I mean, if any of you have worked in the industry before, you know that it's, it's not your traditional nine to five. It's really almost like, you know, an auto worker's third shift kind of scenario, but instead of a, a 9:00 AM dinner, you're having a, a dinner at 10:00 PM, all the way up until 1:00, uh, 1:00 AM, which is a reason for the request. They currently have a 2:00 o'clock license Friday and Saturday. They're looking to get the 2:00 AM license seven days a week. It is consistent with several of the other establishments in Washington Square. I believe Washington Square Tavern has a 2:00 AM. The Public House, I believe, is a 2:00 AM. Relatively straightforward request, happy to answer any questions the board might have. Steve, I'm sure is more eloquent in answering them as well.
Questions, board members? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I just did have one question, because you have kind of an extensive outdoor area, and I assume you will be seeking the outdoor permit once again. So, I, I just was a little bit concerned about, I, I've eaten at your establishment. I don't think you have a real rowdy crowd there, but for the neighbors' sake, I wanted to ask about, you know, how you intend to keep late-night noise down, if, if you're for that outside space.
We actually, being open last year with the patio, we just don't offer late-night service on the patio. We think that that's part of being respectful to the neighborhood, and even as beautiful as the weather is, at the end of dinner service, we move people inside. So, if you sit for dinner, you're welcome to sit on the patio, and when that meal wraps up, we move inside. But it's just not something we look at.
You can see I don't stay up late enough to even know that.
We have no direct butters in our residential sense. There are, of course, schools that we are, do our best to be very respectful of, but we never want to be a real late-night source of noise. We're not, rowdy isn't us anyway.
What time does the kitchen close?
The kitchen will serve until last call. And I hear that sometimes when you see 2:00 AM, you think beverage, but it really isn't. Fairstead actually operates late-night as a separate revolving menu concept. So, starting at the end of dinner service, be it 10 weekdays or 11 weekends, we offer a limited menu, completely separate from our dinner menu, with beverages going. Right now, for instance, we're doing Jamaican food, because we thought that would be fun. Next week, or next month, brings Polynesian. Previously, we've done things like Southeast Asian, Greek sandwiches. So, it really is a separate concept that is as much about food as it is about beverage, and we never offer alcohol without the option of food service.
Good. And you're aware that last call has to be half hour, half hour before?
Half an hour before, which is also when we typically, last call is last call for the kitchen and for the bar.
Okay. Questions, comments, board members? All right.
I, I just want to, to comment that, in fact, there has been difficulty in the Washington Square area with regard to late closings, not from your establishment, but it has been an issue. And I have very mixed feelings about anybody being open till 2:00 AM on a non-weekend night. I'm probably going to vote no on this. I think my colleagues will vote yes. But I would feel much better if there was some way to know that the neighbors are comfortable with this. And we have no indication whatsoever of anybody really being aware of this, what I consider to be significant change. So, I'm just going to, just let you know, that's how I view it.
Okay. Selectman Washinsky?
I'll just state, you know, this is, this community is an active community, and if there were concerns with the neighbors, and this is a very active group of town meeting members, and they were noticed, right?
Yes.
So, I have less of that kind of...
They have come out in the past for various issues, so I think if they were having problems with this, we would have heard from them.
Just for the record, their public notice said we would take this up at 8:30.
Okay. You want to hold it for 10 minutes? We could.
I'm not sure anybody's going to show up. I just know that's what the notice says. That's what the town meeting members...
Because it's not on our agenda for 8:30.
No, no, it's what town meeting members received.
All right. So, let's, so that there is no mistake, let's hold it for 10 minutes and see if somebody does show up. Thank you for pointing that out. So, gentlemen, we'll continue this for 10 minutes, and we'll call you in 10 minutes, okay?
I will say that my adult children have been complaining for years that there were not enough places open late in Brookline, so...
And I still don't see anybody from Vine Ripe Grill here, Lisa Wazell.
I think that because it's a renewal, we don't require, although this clearly is a renewal off, off, of the other renewals, because it's a seasonal, but it still is a renewal, so I'm guessing that they are not required to be here.
Okay.
Is that, you know, we could continue it.
Anybody have a problem with moving this forward? I, I don't.
I, I don't have any objection.
I think they've...
She's a long time...
They proved their mettle, they've done nothing but served this community well, as far as I've, I've ever heard.
Sure.
And I have no problem. I'm going to move that we, and I've reviewed their application to...
It's a public hearing?
Oh, yeah, I suppose it is. Anybody here to be heard on the question of renewing the seasonal all kinds of alcoholic beverage license held by Green on the Grill, DBA Vine Ripe Grill, Lisa Wazell manager? It runs from April 1st, 2015, to January 15th, 2016? Nobody? Okay.
I think, I think it's Grill on the Green.
What did I say?
You said Green on the Grill.
Completely wrong.
Those spinach burgers. Yeah. Right.
I move that we renew the seasonal all kinds of alcoholic beverage license held by Grill on the Green, DBA Vine Ripe Grill, at 1281 West Roxbury Parkway, from April 1st, 2015, to January 15th, 2016. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, we're just going to cool our heels here for about seven minutes, and then we'll take out, we, we did those...
We did that already.
Took them all. Yeah, we had a few minutes.
I suppose we could go ahead and discuss the Article Six.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. Do we expect Mr. McCabe? Is he, is he at the Advisory Committee?
Was the idea that Ms. McCabe was going to present?
Yeah, I, I think if, if you're just waiting for that, you would should, we should just...
He's not on the, uh, advisory committee?
No, he's not. I, I think there may have been some miscommunication from my, just, some communication I had, so I think it's probably best to defer that.
So, we're going to hold that one?
Oh, wait a second. No, I have late-breaking news, he is in the building. Sort of like Elvis.
Okay.
He should be here any minute.
I guess I'll add that we have on our agenda as item 13, appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I, I'd like to hold that item, unless someone has a strong...
It's fine with me.
Strong opinion otherwise.
I would like to say publicly, though, that we have a number of openings on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yes.
And I think that we'd be very interested in maybe getting a variety, not the, not the usual suspects to apply for those openings. So, I'd encourage people who are interested, and who might have some appropriate background in zoning law, to think about applying for those slots.
That would be...
Actually, what, what we need is architects.
Architects, yeah.
There's unfortunately only one person who's qualified. I think the, the statute reads, or the bylaw reads, architect or builder?
Master builder.
Master builder, and therefore...
Which I don't even know what that is.
Right. But the, the issue therefore is, there's only one person out of the three permanent members and all of the alternates who can qualify, and so probably has to attend all of the ZBA meetings, as opposed to having somebody who can...
He has to sit on all the cases.
Yeah, right.
But I will also say...
I don't think that actually happens, but theoretically, he would need to be there.
Right. I will also say that I think maybe somebody who was interested in preservation might be appropriate, since we do have so many...
I totally agree.
Preservation-related cases these days.
Yep.
So, that, that might be, that might be of interest to us.
All right, so let's recess for five minutes.
He's right, he's on his way.
Or, or until Gary McCabe gets here.
It's in the packet. It's the one, it's the, it's, well, let me see. It's the one that's...
Oh, yeah, tell me the notice, I'll see it.
It's to the town, it's the one that goes to the town meeting.
Approximately 8:30, so...
Yeah, we're going to have to address those, because I know sometimes we move things around, and we're sort of stuck with that.
Yeah.
So, we're going to have to figure a different way to convey that.
Well, if you, if you tell them approximately 8:00, and at 8:30, at least they'd be here. That would, I was only concerned that somehow people thought they...
I hear you.
It can be very confusing.
I'm going to try this all back.
I'm guessing nobody's coming, to be honest.
Even the, even the applicant has, seems to have gone home. Here he is.
Why is he out?
Now we're, now we're missing Ben, so... We'll be with him in just a second.
Yeah. I think I announce that every night, until now, but it was too late, so I didn't. Today was the last.
Did you take this in this?
Yeah, I did.
I think I'm out opposed again.
Really?
Unfortunately.
Wow. Okay.
All right, we're going to reconvene, and skipping around just a little bit, we're going to go back to Agenda Item 12, and we're going to consider warrant Article Six, which is the acceptance of legislation to increase property tax exemptions. Ms. McCabe, would you explain this warrant article to us, please?
Excuse me, I'd be happy to. Chairman Goldstein, Gary McCabe, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. So, I come before you on behalf of the Board of Assessors to recommend a warrant article for the upcoming annual town meeting that would increase the statutory exemption that certain eligible taxpayers could receive up to 100% of the base exemption amount. It requires, this action does require a town meeting authorization. A similar article has passed continuously at Brookline Town Meeting since fiscal year 1989. The additional amount of the exemption is uniform on a percentage basis for all eligible taxpayers, regardless of the type of exemption. So, for example, if it's a senior exemption, or a veteran's exemption, or a blind exemption, and, and we vote, you vote, and the town meeting votes to increase up to 100%, the base amount of the exemption, for example, if it's a $500 exemption, would be up to $1,000. So, we have voted to do this continuously since 1989. The additional amount, we have to cover out of our overlay reserve account, which the Board of Assessors manage. And the information in the proposed article, we've included an estimate of what that would cost for fiscal year 16 at $54,000. So, we're anticipating approximately 120 exemptions to be granted, and each of those would get increased as the circumstances permit.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. McCabe?
I have a question, because it's coming up, and I'm not even clear that I can phrase it properly, but in discussions about the override, frequently comes up about folks who have modest incomes and how their taxes are impacted. And, I mean, I, I don't think my document here has the list that we will have by town meeting of the amounts that are engaged. And so, my question to you is a slightly different one.
Sure.
That's the frame. Would you be able to provide us with, and I, whether it's the total number of exempt, exemptions provided, or some other way of helping people understand that there are individuals who are eligible for the exemptions and do actually receive them?
We'd be happy to help out with that information, absolutely. We, I think there's two things there. Selectman DeWitt?
And I know there are different categories of qualifications, which makes all of this complicated.
Right. We can, we have information that we can send out prior to the vote of the override about exemptions that are, that are available, and, you know, the eligibility requirements, there's age, others are means-tested, income, assets, that sort of thing. We could certainly do that, and it may be helpful for certain individuals. We'll also regularly work with the Council on Aging and the Senior Center to promote these exemptions, and we could ask for their assistance as well.
Because part of my question was, how do people know they qualify? How, how would we identify qualified individuals? And I'm not clear, I'm, I'm not clear that it's your responsibility to do that, but...
I think it partially is the Assessor's responsibility, because we're engaged with the taxpayer.
Right.
So, you know, we have other communications that, that we make. Sometimes it's a new owner, and we send a letter, and we say, "Welcome to Brookline", and, you know, you could be eligible for exemptions, including the residential exemption and others. Or it could be, you know, they simply call and inquire, and they usually start with our office, and we go through that. And we've, as a little bit of an outreach effort, we've engaged the Senior Center to help us in that regard, and they have a, a senior work-off volunteer...
Mm-hmm.
Who's been trained in our office, who has regular hours at the Senior Center, and will sit down with anyone who's interested in going into more detail about eligibility. And we'll do that in our office as well. But I think you ask a very good question. I mean, how do you even know about these programs to start with? Oftentimes, we have to reach out beyond the actual homeowner to perhaps those that assist them, whether it's, you know, family members, or friends, or others, to bring that information to them, because it can be confusing, because there are, as you mentioned, different exemptions, different eligibilities. It's a, it's a regular education effort, no question. So, I mean, even talking about it tonight's helpful.
Okay. Good. Well, and maybe it can be in the Senior Center's newsletter and other means that, you know, we have.
Yes, thank you. The, I know that the Senior Center puts an ad in the paper, in the tab, about these hours that are held there with the individual who's been trained on the exemptions, you know, like, it'll be Thursday from 3:00 to 5:00, that sort of thing. So, that's in the tab as well, yeah.
Selectman Washinsky?
Did I hear you correctly that there are approximately 120 taxpayers who've taken advantage of, of various exemptions?
Selectman Washinsky, yes, that are eligible for the up to 100% increase.
Right.
So, they're, so they're included in this particular warrant article. So they're, so they're included in this particular warrant article. But beyond that, there's other exemptions that aren't included. The tax deferral program is not included in this. So that's a very good program, generally for seniors. There's a, this last annual town meeting increased the income limit from that to $55,000, and it's 65, I believe, 65 years of age. You have to own and occupy your home. So, but there's, that's not part of this 100%. That's a deferral of all or part of your property taxes each and every year. The town does eventually receive those taxes back with interest. So those aren't included. And also, the senior work-off volunteer program, which now has 30 individuals in it, that's not included in this up to 100% article as well. It cannot be.
So between all these, there could be 150, 160 taxpayers. You know, at, Selectman Franco and I were at a forum last night, and these exemptions came up, and they were immediately dismissed by some folks as being, the income limits were too low. And they are very low, but I'm glad to hear that there are, you know, that many taxpayers taking advantage of it.
There are. Compared to communities our size, similar size, we have less than a comparable community. We've looked at that a number of ways. It's difficult to say exactly why we, our percentages or our numbers are lower than comparable communities. One of the reasons, perhaps, something we've considered, is these other communities don't have the residential exemption, which we have. And so if you own and occupy your home, you're receiving a $2,000 exemption that, as the residential exemption, that other communities don't have. So, you know, we think that's playing a part in this.
And that helps, assuming your home is under the median.
I was going to say, then, the other thing we do is our classification system, which, frankly, if we start listing all of these ways, we, what should I call it, modify our property taxes, we shift burden in a variety of different ways, and we provide relief in a variety of different ways.
Yeah, thank you. The tax classification, which is an annual vote of your board, Board of Selectmen, also is a tax policy tool, absolutely, and can shift taxes between residential and commercial.
But Gary brings up an important program, that tax deferral one, that I'm always surprised we don't have more people participating in that. It's similar to a reverse mortgage, but if your goal is to stay in your home, it's a way to put those taxes off until you finally move out, one way or another.
Yes, Selectman Daley, thank you.
It's 5%. The interest is...
Interest rate's 5%.
Five.
Yeah, five. We lowered it a couple of years ago.
Also, at town meeting.
Yeah.
Discussing that...
That was stated last night.
Oh.
It was stated at 7 by the...
I think it used to be 7. I think it was the most recent town meeting.
It used to be 8, I think, and it came down to 5. So, but we still don't have many people participating, and I'm surprised.
We would, we would hope for more. It is an excellent program. That's the tax deferral program. Speaking with taxpayers who are both in the program and have chosen not to be, I can tell you it's a hard decision for families to make.
Right.
Because the taxes will be paid at the time the property's transferred.
Well, yeah, but if you're, you know, if you're, I mean, I have people saying to me, "Well, I just want to stay in my home." And that is certainly, and if the taxes are an issue for you, I mean, obviously, there's other expenses. You know, if you're taking out a reverse mortgage, you can put a new roof on or something like that, which this doesn't do for you. But, you know, if you're saying the taxes are the issue, this provides some nice, nice opportunity to just stay in that home and pay those taxes later.
Yeah, thank you. And I'd continue to offer, anyone who has questions, please call the assessor's office or come in and see us, whether it's the deferral program or some of the other exemption programs. As they get closer to making decisions, perhaps, about an override, you know, we'd be happy to explain, you know, to anyone who's interested, what's available.
Do you have a sense of whether people who take advantage of these, these programs is expanding or contracting over time? Are we seeing the publicity effort pay dividends and more people applying?
Selectman Franco, that's a very good question, you know. Is there growth in these programs? Overall, we're seeing the numbers decline in total, primarily due to the veterans' exemptions. You know, there's a clear trend downwards. And it's not just the veteran. You have to be a disabled veteran and a certain level of disability. So, and, you know, fortunately, there's less of those. So overall, those numbers are down. But the other numbers are steady, I would say, the seniors and the, or the various senior programs, and there are more than one. Those have been pretty steady. They haven't grown, nor have they declined. It's really, the decline overall has been due to the veterans. The blind exemptions, visually impaired, has grown as well. Not at the same rate that we're losing veterans, but it has grown.
I confess I'm a little bit naive on exactly where you publicize these various exemptions and abatements and deferral programs, too. But I would encourage you to look to neighborhood associations as well. I've found in my travels around town that people are very plugged into their neighborhood associations, and it's a good conduit for information.
Yes, thank you. We're not currently, you know, advertising through neighborhood associations, so that's certainly something we can do.
All right. This is a public hearing. Anybody want to be heard on warrant article number six for the spring town meeting? No? Okay. The proposed vote for town meeting I'm going to read, it is that the town elect to establish an additional property tax exemption for fiscal year 2016, which shall be uniform for all exemptions in accordance with Section 4 of Chapter 73 of the Acts of 1986, as amended by Chapter 126 of the Acts of 1988, and accept said Section 4 as amended. I'd like to move that we propose favorable action on that vote to town meeting. All in favor of my motion for favorable action, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And we will now, thank you, Ms. McCabe, appreciate it, move back to agenda item number 10, which is the application of Respect Our Hospitality for an increase of, in hours. And we are now past 8:30. And I will make the call, is there anyone who would like to comment publicly on the application of Respect Our Hospitality LLC, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license for an increase in hours? And I don't see anyone. So any further comment or question from members of the Board of Selectmen? I'd like to move, then, that we approve the application of Respect Our Hospitality LLC, DBA Fairstead Kitchen, Stephen Bowman, manager, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license as a common victualler at 1704 Beacon Street, for a change of hours. And previously, the Monday to Friday close hour was 1 a.m. It'll remain 1 a.m. on Sunday, but Monday and Friday will move from to 2 a.m. So that means that the final hourly schedule will be Monday to Friday, 5:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Sunday and Saturday, 10 a.m. to 2 a.m. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
No.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you. Congratulations. This ends our business for this evening, and thank you all for your attention.